Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for June 23. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So tonight, we're beginning with two executive sessions, and then we will be coming back into public session. So I will move that we enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property 334 Edge Hill Road and 41 Wharf Street, believing that having such discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and that we enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation against Milton Landing Condominium Trust, believing that having such discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board.
Second.
Anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Unanimous. Okay, so we are now in executive session. We're going to move to the outside room, and then we will come back to this room. Thank you, and welcome back. We're now back in public session. And our first item on the open agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone here this evening for public comment? Also, in order to citizen speak. And I think we just have one. So, sir, would you like to come up to the table? There's a microphone up here. And if you could sign in and state your name and your address. And while we're waiting, I'll just remind everyone, so we generally try to limit public comment to about three minutes. So we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. We do have a pretty full agenda this evening.
I'm going to be longer than three minutes.
Excuse me?
I'm going to be longer than three minutes.
Well, we're going to allow three minutes.
Please do. Thank you. Michael, good to see you again.
How are you, Sean?
Good to see you, too. These boxes right here.
Could you state your name and address, please?
No, I won't.
Well, sir, that's our process. We'd like name and address for the record.
Sean Roach, father, 81 Fuller's Lane.
Thank you.
These boxes here are both the truth. This one here, this is vengeance and hate. This one is love and forgiveness. I can be both boxes. You can be both boxes. Can you do me the favor, after this long year, and close your eyes and listen to what I have to say for this next part? Will you do that for me? So I really want you to hear it. Please? You won't do that for me?
I'm listening, sir.
I figured that. Picture a pre-teen child, 11 or 12-ish, at a playground, or at a church, or at Boy Scouts, just playing, or praying, or camping. The adult you left your childhood with asks, hey, hey, do you ever think about having sex with girls? What about both? Do you know if you want to have sex with boys? Why won't you answer me? I just want to be a Boy Scout. Yeah, but I need to know. I want to tell my friends about it. Close your eyes, Mike. Has the girl you pictured in your head reached puberty yet? What about pangender or cisgender? I just want to be married like my mom and dad. Can you picture it? Can you picture it, Katie? That dirty old man, that coach, the Boy Scout leader, and uncle? I don't even know your friends. That's okay. Everybody's doing it. Hey, do you want to have a penis someday?
Okay, Mr. Roach.
Don't you dare interrupt me!
Mr. Roach.
What are you going to do, call the cops?
I am the chair of this meeting, and I'm going to ask you, we have families and children who may be watching this meeting.
No, you're going to hear how I feel for once.
I'd like you to please clean up your language.
Penis? They say it in school!
Mr. Roach.
Thank you!
Mr. Roach, please make your language.
You clean up your language. You clean up the language in the schools!
Mr. Roach, please.
You told me to clean up.
Appropriate for this meeting.
Yeah, I think it.
Which is a public meeting.
Is it appropriate for schoolchildren? What a thing to say to me right now!
We're up to three minutes, Mr. Roach. I'll give you a little more time.
I hope you enjoy your last fucking meeting.
Okay, Mr. Roach, I'm calling you out of order.
Good.
So thank you very much.
I am out of order.
We're going to go to the next agenda item.
No, you're not.
Mr. Roach.
Richard, please, give me the respect for this. I've been waiting a year to say this.
Mr. Roach.
I've waited my whole life to say this.
That language is out of order.
All right, I won't swear anymore.
We're going to go to the next agenda item.
I'll calm down. I'm calm. I'm at peace for the first time in my life right now.
We're going to take a two-minute recess.
No, you're not.
Yes, we are.
If someone gets up from this.
And I'm going to ask Milton Access Television to cut the cameras.
Mike, do not get up on me.
We're going to take a two-minute recess.
They're taking a recess, Sean.
I'm going to keep talking. You recess all you want. I'm not talking to you anyways. I'm talking to the people behind me. Thank you for letting me continue.
Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Roach, with the consent of my fellow board members, I'm going to offer you one or two minutes to finish up your statement. Please make sure your comments are respectful to the board, as we've been respectful to you. And we have a viewing audience that may consist of children who are watching the meeting, so please keep the language clean. The time is now 7:53.
What if I gave you some candy? Would you tell me then, I don't want candy, I just came here to pray? What if there was a lot of candy? Okay, fine, I'll answer. Can you see them? Someone you have to trust with your child while you're at work paying for it? Can you see it? Can you see that poor kid? Can you see her? Can you see him? Now picture an educator. Now picture people of power making it happen. So I ask, are child predators allowed within 200 feet of a school? Not one educator thought you might trigger a child for a political agenda. No one said, no, we shouldn't do this. You said there is no agenda. I'm sure some wanted to stop it. I like to think most wanted to stop it. But you use their jobs to do it. You fight to let predators out of jail, so we have to worry about it happening again, and again, and again. Do you know you triggered me with that, Paul? Do you know that about me? Is just one okay? Do you think you may have triggered just one child? Is just one okay? You yelled not one death to stay home last year, and you were too selfish to see that, blinded by what you want. You think you are the courageous one, but you have a yard sign. You will say after you hear this, see, I told you, he is a white male. He doesn't have our flag on his house. He's fragile. Do I look fragile to you now? Do you think you'll ever call me fragile again? I know you won't, because you are the weak, a bunch of Facebook warriors. My transgender nephew was at our graduation party last week. We talked when we had a chance. I told him I'm a survivor, too, to let him know he's not alone. We both survived different things that made us closer to being the same. We talked about how many times we wanted to end it, and why we drank alcohol, and what we do to stay sober. Do you think he would have to call the cops if someone messed with them? No, he can call me anytime, because I would take care of it. The politicians love us fighting over this issue. They use us for votes. They push agendas to get us so angry that we form groups against each other. You say, what agenda? We just want math and reading and science at school. God forbid you teach business. Is that too much to ask? You'll listen to what I've just said, and you'll say, see, I told you, he's homophobic. I'm sorry you can't see it, but we do. We didn't go to college. We're not stupid.
Mr. Roach, it's now 7:56. I've got you three initial minutes, so please finish up.
If I was president, one law, one law, and it would be over, a sexuality right that would say, don't mess with these people. We'll take care of it. You can't have a church. You can't decide when to sell chicken. Politicians will never fix this. Why? Because they love the divide. Just one law, and the pride parade would be a celebration, not a march. You stole hundreds of thousands of dollars from our kids' education to keep it going, and wanted me to stay quiet? Because it's what you want? But you're forgetting one thing. We don't care what you think. We never did. Nobody does.
Mr. Roach, it is now 7:57.
We don't care what you have to say. We want math and science and reading, and we don't want the hate. You want them to read. Every single decision the politicians made last year during a pandemic was to divide us against each other. They saw us as votes, not humans. I want to be proud of my vote again, not keep it quiet in case someone will hate me for it. They let the country burn last year into nothing. Both sides loved it. They sent us home to watch it, helpless, waiting for it to stop. They did nothing to stop it.
Okay, Mr. Roach, citizen speak is now over.
When people went to your house to protest, they wilted again.
We've given you seven minutes to speak.
And called 20,000 soldiers to protect themselves.
Mr. Roach, we're going to go on to our next agenda item.
They called no one to protect us.
We're going to go on to our next agenda item.
You think those volunteer soldiers wanted to be there?
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
They went involuntarily.
Thank you.
You didn't care about George Floyd as a person. They used him for votes. That's the tragedy of George Floyd. That's why his murals are everywhere, to remember hate, not lift us up, to divide, to get angry enough to vote. George didn't even have to be there that day. We all put him there. We all put him there. And we didn't even know we did it.
Mr. Roach, we're now five minutes into your second.
People in power made the protests happen for votes. That's why they never stopped it. They wanted the visual of the National Guard stopping it for votes.
We're going to take a recess while we go on to our next agenda item.
So they could say, see, I told you he's a dictator.
Mr. Roach, I'm going to ask you to please stop talking.
And the other side didn't stop either.
I am in control of the meeting. You are not in control of the meeting.
So we could watch it, get angry, and go vote.
The board has indulged you and given you eight minutes to speak.
You stole our First Right Amendment. Sound familiar?
You're over your time, Mr. Roach.
Our forefathers had the vision to see this day coming, and it's the first thing they ever wrote, freedom of speech. You're going to cut me off right now? I bet you do.
We're going to take a recess. We're going to get our guests who are waiting for our next agenda item.
Then they wrote the Second Amendment in case you took the first one away.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Citizen speak is now over. Milton Access, we're going to take a break while we wait for our next agenda item. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are now back in our open session. We are on to item number six. I think that's a couple of seconds.
All right, okay.
Here we are. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're back onto our public session, and we are on item number six, which is a happy occasion, and we're going to recognize Michael Lynch, Executive Director of Milton Access Television. I think we have at least one member of the Milton Access Television Board with us, so please come up this evening. We'd like to welcome you to come up to the table and join us.
Bring the boss, Michael. Bring her with you. She want to come up?
While you're doing that, if I could ask our board for a motion to approve a proclamation. We're going to read this, and.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the proclamation honoring Michael Lynch, Executive Director of Milton Access TV.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye, Becky.
Aye.
Well, welcome. We have Michael Lynch with us from Milton Access Television, and Becky Padera, who is a member of the Board of Milton Access Television, also known as MPEG. We're so happy you're here this evening, Michael, but unfortunately, it is for the sad event that you're going to be leaving Milton Access Television and going on to a new venture. But we have a proclamation that the board has prepared, and I'm going to read it into the record, and we're going to present it to you. Whereas Michael Lynch is a Milton native, a 2003 graduate of Milton High School, and a 2007 graduate of Quinnipiac University, from which he received a Bachelor of Arts degree in mass communications, studio production, with a minor in history. And whereas Michael Lynch is the grandson of the late Bernard J. Lynch III, who founded Milton Access Television and served as its president for many years. And whereas Michael Lynch began working as a volunteer for the Milton Speaks Show on Milton Access Television during his high school years. And whereas after college, Michael Lynch brought his experience in filming, directing, producing, and programming to Milton Access Television, becoming production coordinator in 2009, and executive director in 2012. And whereas during the past decade, the Board of Directors of Milton Access Television, residents of Milton, and many town boards, committees, officials, and employees have relied upon Michael Lynch's leadership, strong work ethic, sound judgment, and creativity. And whereas in his role as Executive Director of Milton Access Television, Michael Lynch expanded programming, oversaw the renovation and construction of the television studio at Pierce Middle School, and during the COVID-19 pandemic, provided invaluable leadership that assisted the town of Milton in adapting to remote town meetings and board and committee meetings. And whereas Michael Lynch will step down from his position with Milton Access Television on July 1, 2021, now therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, thank Michael Lynch for his distinguished service to Milton Access Television, which has benefited the town of Milton and its residents. Wish him well in his new business venture, and hereby proclaim June 23, 2021, as Michael Lynch Day in the Town of Milton, signed by all the members of the board. We'd like to present this to you, Michael.
I know you hate this.
Michael, before you go, Senator Timblett and Representative Driscoll were both here. Unfortunately, other events required their time. They will arrange to meet with you to honor you at another occasion.
With the cash.
Thank you.
We know you're not one to seek public attention, Michael, but we wanted to recognize all that you've done for Milton. And this time, I want to invite all the members of the board, the town administrator, Ms. Padera, to make any comments that they would like.
I'll say something. So I haven't worked with Mike as long as many other members of the board have, and I'm sure they'd all love to be here tonight to say some of the same things. But anybody that's worked with Mike knows that he has such a, I can't imagine MPEG without him. He has such a passion. If you can have a passion for government meetings and taping government meetings, Mike has it.
On Zoom.
Exactly. But he has such a passion for it, and he's changed the face, I think all of us would agree, on our government meetings and recording them and bringing them to as many people as possible. I can think of just a few things in terms of updating our debate programs and bringing in more students. He has brought students into the field that he's passionate about, and they've gone off to college in those careers because of Mike, which is just so exciting. He's brought our meetings to areas of Fuller Village and other sites where they didn't previously have access to those meetings. And he's worked with a board that has been, you know, pushing him along the way, and all have been so grateful for what he's done for the town, because he is really a dedicated town person as well as dedicated to MPEG. But like I said, we're really going to miss him. I can't imagine, like, MPEG without him. And it's kind of unusual. I think we all say, as a person as young as he is, to put such a huge stamp. I feel like he's been here forever. But we're so going to miss him, and we're really hoping you stay close, because we're going to need your help continuously, so.
Other members of the board, Mr. Zulus?
So Madam Chair, I'll say, one of the true tests of a person are how you respond when people need you, and when your town needs you. And last year, in March, Mike Lynch and MPEG didn't have an obligation to step in on behalf of the town and make sure there was communication to the residents, and make sure that there were public meetings with the residents. He didn't have an obligation. He didn't have a line of authority that required him to do it, but he did it. He stepped up, and he worked with the town, and he made sure there was information getting to the public at a critical time to help people when they needed it, and help this town when it needed it. And that was a true test. And that showed me that, you know, Mike, you're someone who cares about other people, and you care about the town, and you can be creative and innovative in the midst of a crisis so that people get the information and that we're able to respond. So, you know, I'll be forever grateful for all that you did a year ago, March, and throughout the pandemic. It was a real test, and it was something in which you really shone. So thank you for that, Mike.
Go ahead, Monica. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Well, stepping outside the pandemic, I just have to say, as a person who'd never been on TV, was not interested in any way, shape, or form being on TV.
It's too late now.
And I know. But just as a candidate coming in and watching you not only work with me, but with other people, and then projecting that to the hundreds of people who you've helped guide through, you know, these novel, uncomfortable experiences, you're a model of patience and can-do, and just such kindness. So thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Madam Chair, so as Becky can attest on the MPEG, being on the MPEG board, and myself being a rep, when Michael announced, was it just about 23 weeks ago that we started what was, we thought, our regular MPEG meeting with, I'm resigning July 1, and it was like you could cut the silence with, I mean, it was, before Ada called me on the phone, she goes, I can't, I'm in shock. I can't believe it. But, you know, from a personal point of view, I've been with you on so many things outside of this room and in this community, good and bad. But a credit to you, you know, I knew your great-grandfather, your grandfather, your father, you, your brother, your mother. Your entire family has been giving back to this community for as long as I can remember. I can remember your great-grandfather holding court, telling stories about his meeting with Pope John Paul II when he was a cardinal. But your mother, she knows what I'm talking about. Like, just, and, you know, just, you've done this, as my colleagues have said, with such grace and such dignity. And the good news is, for our board, he is going to be staying on the MPEG board, so he will have a voice in guiding us, continuing in the direction and the path that he has set, and that's a good thing for all of us. So you're right, Becky, it does seem like he's been here for four decades, and not just, but you should be proud of that. You know, when you walk away from something, and I quote my own father, who spent 43 years serving this community, and when he walked away on his last day, I asked him, and it's a quote I've used many times, because my father didn't say many things about anything, you know, when you walk away from something you've given so much to and cared so much about, just ask yourself one simple question. Is it a little bit better today as you leave than it was before you arrived? And I think all of us in this room and in this community know the answer is absolutely yes. So all the best, and we'll be seeing you. You're not going anywhere. I still have a feeling that we sit at, like, Milton High School graduation, there's my Lynch out under the tent. Yeah, Sean, I said that. Sean's listening, he's listening. Congratulations, and thank you for everything, and everything you've done for this community. You've really, you've been a credit to your family, your name, and to what 02186 zip code means. So thank you very much. I'm laughing at this.
Thank you. Michael, I think I can speak for Senator Timblett and Representative Driscoll in saying that generations of your family and generations of this community are indebted to you. And that's quite something for a young man. I think, having known you when we first came back home to Milton in scouting, and by the way, I mentioned this evening to our son Brendan, whom you knew, and he asked to extend his best wishes and congratulations to you. I see for your future further time in public service, not that you haven't already done what some people in public service have done in a lifetime, but there's more ahead of you, and I think you will have a very, very successful career, not only in business, but in serving the public. Congratulations again.
Madam Chair, if I might, just one quick comment. Mike, you mean the world to this town. I got here five years ago. I didn't know the first thing about MATV or any of these board meetings. You led me along. What I will say, and I'll piggyback on everything that these folks have talked about tonight, the sign of a good leader in my mind is someone who can not be there, and things run as smoothly as if they were there. And you've done that for this team, right? I think there's three or four meetings on tonight, one's on Zoom, two live. I mean, you're doing it. They're doing it. You've taught them. You've brought them here, and that's a really good sign of a leader. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. You will be missed, and we're glad we have you for at least another week, and then staying on the board. So thank you to you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. If you'd like to say anything, please feel free.
Say anything, that's all.
The microphone.
Not. You got a microphone? Yeah. Not one for words, but thank you for this. It wasn't necessary, but thank you. Yeah, I don't really have much to say. I do feel that I've raised and nurtured a good team, so they will continue on in the steps that I leave behind. I've really enjoyed working here. I really enjoyed growing the program. You always think you're doing a good job. I realize I really did a really good job, and I know that it's just nice to hear the recognition for all the hard work that I've had to do and I've done over the past 12 years now. So thank you for that. I am staying on the board. I'm going to help with the transition out, and you probably still will see me lurking around at some meeting or baseball game or graduation or something, because I just love this town so much. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Congrats.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks so much.
The next item on our agenda is number seven. We're going to defer that to a future meeting. So we're on to number eight, which is a discussion with our town council, Kevin Freitag, regarding recent legislation concerning the open meeting law. So, Mr. Freitag, if you'd come join us, and thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. Kevin Freitag, Office of Town Council. Thank you for asking me here tonight to talk to you a bit about the governor's recent signature on a new piece of legislation, a special act of 2020, titled "An Act Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency." It has a number of different provisions and components, many of which affect the operations of municipalities, including Milton, of course. The act, which was signed on the 16th, has a number of provisions that relate to things like the sale of alcohol, foreclosures, corporate governance, virtual nullarization, takeout and delivery services, residential evictions, testing guidelines for COVID, and the expansion of eligibility to administer the COVID-19 vaccine, the elimination of certain prohibitions against the unlicensed practice of nursing, the expansion of the eligibility to administer medication for the treatment of opioid use disorder, but also, as I said, a number of things that affect municipalities. So I've listed out a few of those, and I'm just going to sort of move through them quickly, and then certainly, if anyone has questions, please feel free to stop me or wait to the end, and I can answer questions then. So things that will or may directly affect Milton are that pursuant to the act, the Select Board may vote with the approval of the town moderator to decrease the number of votes necessary to constitute a quorum. That's something that, and that's for town meetings. That's not something that Milton did, but it is something that is available to Milton until December 15 of 2021. Also, along those same lines, municipalities may continue to conduct remote representative town meetings in accordance with the provisions of the previous special act of 2020, which allowed Milton to conduct its town meetings remotely. It can continue to do that until December 15 of 2021. The Select Boards are also now in a position to approve requests to expand outdoor table service until April 1 of 2022, so long as they first establish a process to approve such requests. That's really a Dave DeLuca issue. If that comes to the board, Dave DeLuca will be able to advise you on exactly what that process would look like and how that would take place. that process would look like and how that would take place. And then finally, the special act did quite a bit to extend some of the relief to public bodies that had been previously granted under the open meeting law. This extension of relief is going to permit public bodies to continue to act remotely and have relief from the open meeting law until April 1st of 2022. So, longer than the other, the two previous extensions regarding quorum and remote town meetings, these extensions will last until April 1st of 2022. So, specifically, public bodies may continue to hold their meetings remotely so long as the public body provides adequate alternative means. That's a term that's defined in the act and I'll mention what that means in just a minute. Those adequate alternative means have to be provided free of subscription, toll, or similar charge. By adequate alternate means or alternative means, the Attorney General's Office has opined that things that we've all become very familiar with over the past year and a half, like Zoom, high-capacity telephone conference lines, Facebook Live, YouTube Live, or even a live TV broadcast, much like Milton Access offers, will suffice as alternative adequate means by which a public body can include the public in a public meeting. So, if the public body decides not to meet in person, any of those options are available to the public body. There is also an option here, which probably doesn't apply to Milton, which allows for a public body that is unable by means, or as a result of economic hardship and despite its best efforts to provide adequate alternative means. There are some other options for it. I can let you know what those are, but it hasn't been an issue for Milton so far, so I don't think it's probably worth getting into too much detail with now. And frankly, it's not an option that's favored by the Attorney General's Office in any event. So, as a result of the extension of this relief and as sort of constituted in the special act, public bodies can continue to meet remotely. They also may meet in person and have the public participation be remote. So, that's sort of a third option, if you will. So, if you think public meetings, like, much like, or exactly like we're having right now, option one. Option two is COVID-19 remote meetings. Option three might be public body meets in person, but the public is not allowed to be in person at the meeting, but can attend that meeting remotely. In any of those, or rather, in any of those options that involve the public participating remotely, there are certain things that must be done. The chair must announce the name of the members or members who are participating remotely at the start of the meeting, and that information is to be recorded in the meeting minutes. All votes must be taken by roll call. Members of the public body, and I'd suggest that this is perhaps the most important, members of the public body must be clearly audible to each other and to members of the public at all times. And then regarding executive session, if the public body goes into executive session, each member of the public body needs to state that no other person is present or able to hear the discussion at their remote location. These things are things that the Select Board in Milton has been doing all along. They are, you know, requirements that are going to stay in place at least until April 1st of 2022. The posting notices, I think it's worth stating, remain the same. So, it's still 48 hours notice. If the meeting is going to be in person, the notice shall say so. If the meeting is going to be remotely, it needs to provide instructions, which is exactly what the Milton Public Boards have been doing for some time now regarding how to attend the meeting remotely. I think I'd also just point out that there, you know, among sort of the municipal attorneys that I interact with regularly, there's been a lot of discussion about hybrid meetings. There's no specific quote-unquote "hybrid" meeting provision of this special act, but it's definitely something that could legally be permissible. Most of my colleagues have run, or have raised concerns about the practicality of doing so and specifically the ability of the members of the public body to be able to see and hear each other and the members of the public to be able to see and hear everything that the members of the board are doing. But so long as that's able to be accomplished, then you can hold a so-called hybrid meeting. So, that's just a brief recap of, I think, the most important provisions of the special act. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Town Council? Ms. Collins?
Why is a meeting in which we meet in person, but the public is remote, not considered a hybrid meeting?
I suppose you could consider that a hybrid. It's just, it's not described as such in the legislation, but I think that certainly that's, I guess that would fall under the idea of a hybrid meeting. I think, too, the idea of perhaps some members being remote and other members being in person and then maybe some members of the public being in person and some members of the public being remote, that might also be considered a hybrid meeting. And that particular dynamic, I think, probably from a practical perspective, is the most challenging, just in terms of things like audio and feedback and the ability, most importantly, the public to be able to hear what every member of the board is saying while they're observing the meetings. And by the way, these provisions do not require the boards to allow members of the public to participate in meetings. The open meeting law has never done that. So, that's an option that any board has, particularly in Milton, and this special act does nothing to change that. So, it's still, public participation is still something that is done at the option of the chair unless it's a public hearing, like we see, for instance, in the 40B hearings. That's a different subset and the public is going to have to be able to participate in those meetings, but Milton is well-equipped to do that right now, I think.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments for Town Council? I think one approach might be that we could have some meetings in person and that we could have some meetings via Zoom virtually. And it might make sense in the context of a meeting where we might only be going into an executive session to have that on Zoom and maybe we schedule that at a time that the public is not going to be there, this daytime meeting or whenever may be convenient for everyone's schedules. But I think by having a public meeting doesn't mean that at the next meeting it couldn't be a Zoom for some reason if we thought that circumstances might make sense for that. Is that correct?
That's right. There's nothing in the act that says once you start doing meetings one way that you can't go back. And certainly, the idea of having meetings where everything is an executive session might be appropriate for a Zoom or remote meeting with the important point that even if the meeting is going to be almost entirely consistent of the executive session topics, it still has to be opened in public session. So, even if it were a Zoom meeting, you'd still have to post, allow the members of the public to log onto the meeting, see the chair, move the board into executive session, and then you could proceed from there.
Mr. Zulus?
So, I think what I favor, and Kevin, I think this is outside of the legislation, which is a public in-person meeting that meets all the requirements of the open meeting law, but adds the opportunity for participation, for example, in public comment through Zoom or through some computer means, so that you have a full public meeting, but you add the participation. And I think that's probably outside of the statute. That's in addition, something that we can add on our own rather than some kind of requirements. And at least that's the way I'm kind of.
I think that that's, I think that that's right. I mean, looking at it, just, you know, going back 16 or 18 months, I think the board could have done something just like that then. I think the board could still do something like that now.
Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, my interpretation, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is a toolkit that's provided for the conducting of the public business of the community and that's very much to our advantage.
I agree.
I very much like the idea of executive session, the reflections that you made. I think under adverse weather conditions, this toolkit will be invaluable so that business is not delayed, but it is conducted on time for expediency purposes, economic purposes, whatever. And I just wanted to ask if this will also be made known to all of the other boards, committees, commissions of the town government so that they are aligned with what we are going through in our understanding here this evening.
It is, Mr. Doyle. In fact, Mike Denny and I have already had a couple of conversations with the town clerk regarding these options and will continue to do so in the coming days.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else tonight, Kevin?
No.
On this topic? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your waiting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right. The next, we're on to item number nine, which is a discussion of comments to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding the Chickataby Road and Route 28 proposed roundabout. And I'll ask Mr. Denny to give us an update on this item.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, about a month ago, Mastard reached out. What they're looking for is the town's, they're calling it a technical look at the 25% design plans that they've currently put forth for the intersection of Chickataby Road and Randolph Ave, Route 28. They are talking about a roundabout. I put the feeler out to my DPW director, our Chief of Police, and our Chief of Fire, Chief Madden. They all came back with some comments. They understand that the public right-of-way is owned by Mastard as you come down Randolph Ave, Route 28, and Chickataby Road is actually owned by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So, it is not in the town's authority. DPW Director Berkeley noted that there are some utilities in the ground that the town does own, and they're doing a utility walk in August. Some of the comments that came from Chief King and Chief Madden were similar to what we heard when they presented, first presented this idea of a roundabout at that intersection to this board probably two summers ago, I think, which was with the constant drip of traffic coming from a roundabout, there could be some access issues for residents and businesses that live on the north side of Randolph Ave. I believe we've heard testimony from Mr. Thomas about the inability for people to get in and out of the landscaping business. Some of the residents talked about how hard it is to get out onto Randolph Ave from Manhattan, Sassamon, Eager, Ridgewood, streets like that that come across. So, Chief King would like them to take a look at timing the lights at Hillside a little better so that that traffic flow does have that kind of off switch where people can get out of some of the businesses and residences along that corridor, but appreciated the design as it stands. It's currently a $5.8 million project as it's presented. Chief Madden appreciated the fact that in their plans, they have a capability for a ladder truck to go around that roundabout. That was one of his main concerns, the largest vehicle in his fleet. But all in all, I think it was positive comments from each of the three department heads, subject matter experts. This board is asked to submit a general comment letter to Mastard and Howard Stein-Hudson, who are the design engineers, and they will then move that forward to a 25% design, which will be a formal public hearing in the future. But that's the project as currently designed in their 25% plans.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Denny. And we do have a letter from the Department of Public Works that has their comments. So, the question I think would be, how do we want to submit this? Do we want to prepare a cover letter and perhaps attach the Public Works Department's letter? We should probably incorporate the Chief of Police's comment as well. Maybe that could go into our cover letter. Does anyone have any comments or questions first from Mr. Denny?
I just have one question. I mean, we've seen, going back to, it was Melinda who first found the story about how roundabouts are just becoming a huge, it was ARP, I'd go from maybe 2018, 2019, I think. And I actually note now how many, I've spent a lot of time working in Western Mass this year and I can't believe how many I see them adding, but perhaps to the Chief King's comments and to Chase's comments is perhaps we talk to Mass Highway about the possibility of implementing some of the smart technology we're putting into the square where not only will it Hillside and, you know, get Hillside and Randolph to talk to 750 Randolph, even though that's on a, but all the way up to, all the way up to our San Luis. I think that can only help. I mean, that's what Boston's trying to do with us across the whole, I don't street corner. I think it only makes sense. So, I think any technical advances we can make, they'll only help this project. They'll only help any of the issues associated with the overall goal. So, I'm fine with that. So, sorry, I didn't see.
No, 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 no. What you said just made me wonder if, you know, that Route 28 corridor study has smart lights and, you know, all of the technology. Okay.
Yeah. I think that, I think the timing of this project has been moved up. If you recall, it's one of the highest accident corridors, intersections in the state. Couple that with the fact that when they presented to this board and to the public, they talked about it being the more costly proposal. Building a roundabout is more expensive, but they think, they thought and still think, if they're presenting it this way, that as traffic engineers, this is the safer, albeit more expensive, option.
I think they're right. I just, I just think of the numbers of severe and fatal accidents I've been to by all life just, I think they're correct. I would never, I remember when they first presented it to you and I in the room, I was chair when they, and I was like, what? But when I look at it now, I think it's definitely, they're heading in the right direction.
Anyone else? Madam Chair? Mr. Zulus?
A question for Mike. Mike, do you know if Chief King's suggestion on the Hillside light is a suggestion that would be as part of the roundabout or in lieu of the roundabout? I thought it was in as part of.
As part of, yes.
As part of, yeah.
Yep. So that, so that the people, as they come northbound from the roundabout and southbound for that matter, that there's not that constant flow and that people can get out of Newcombe Farms or Eagle Farms or one of those businesses or even the residences. There's a lot of driveways on Randolph Ave, too, that, you know, I'm pretty certain people probably have to back in at night in order to get out in the morning.
So, I think, given that, Madam Chair, I think your suggestion is a good one to have a cover letter to make sure we include Chief King's comment. And Chief Madden's comment was, I think, barely, he said he really didn't have anything to add and he felt that the roadway was sized to the ladder trucks. So, I think that makes sense to include a cover letter with the DPW's comments and my reference to Chief King's.
And I think we're looking at July 1st to get our comments in?
Yeah. So.
Approximately.
We received the email on June 7th and they said they'd take comments for 30 days. I let them know that this board wouldn't be meeting till tonight and that I would submit comments as soon as possible. So, whenever we can get that letter together, I'll get it. They're expecting it. And then I don't, I don't know what the turnaround time is for the public hearing process where they take public commentary. We'll probably have it here on several occasions, but yeah.
And that's important to reiterate, that the public will have an opportunity to comment. It's not at this stage. It's after we have the 25% design. Okay. So, would anyone like to make a motion? I think it would be to the effect that we submit written comments in the form of the Public Works Department's letter and a letter from, I guess it's from the board rather than the town administrator, that would include the police chief's comments.
I'll second that as your motion.
Okay. I'll make it. And I made it as a motion and Mr. Wells has seconded. Do we have any discussion?
I just wanted to be sure that we're including all of the town agencies that would be relevant, police, fire, DPW, and anybody that we haven't thought of during this particular conversation.
I think those are the only three.
Those are the three they're looking for.
Yeah. And fire didn't, fire didn't really have any additional comments. Or any comments. Okay. Yeah. So, I think the letter would include police and we'd attach DPW's letter. Okay. Yes, Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, maybe I might just add that maybe we can delegate to the chair to produce the letter on behalf of us or delegate to someone to produce the letter so we don't have to vote on it.
Sure. Yeah. I think the sooner we can get in, the better. Our next meeting is the 14th of July, so maybe Mr. Denny and I can work on that together.
So, I would just add a friendly amendment that the board delegates to the chair the authority to prepare a letter on behalf of the board.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Okay. Do we have anything further on this? If not, we'll go to a vote. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Collins? And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is a meeting with our Council on Aging Director, Christine Stanton. And then we're going to vote some appointments to the Council on Aging Board. Good evening, Ms. Stanton.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us and thank you for waiting tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for allowing me to share all the wonderful work that we're doing at the Council on Aging for residents over the age of 60 in the town. I have sort of a yearly year-end review. COA was in full operation. COA was in full operation throughout the pandemic, supporting and advocating for residents over the age of 60 and their families in Milton by providing programs, services, and resources that promote independent living and enrich their lives. We do this through health and wellness programs, providing a place for socialization, an extensive transportation program, and community resource referrals. Over this past pandemic year, in-person programs were significantly impacted. So we pivoted to provide a wide range of services and programs to the community via socially-distanced outdoor programs and programs on Zoom and Milton Access TV. Of importance to note, we were open and fully staffed. Outreach programs and transportation operated throughout the pandemic. We utilized every inch of our outdoor space, our beautiful patio. We had a tent in the parking lot, and we also used the parking lot for classes. We were on the front lines of the COVID-19 vaccination rollout. We fielded over 2,000 telephone calls in a four-day period, assisting adults age 75 and over to register for the vaccination. We were the hub for the COVID-19 vaccinations in Milton. We scheduled, hosted, staffed, and provided transportation to the vaccination clinics that were held at the COA. Then we assisted all other town residents over the age of 60 and to put them in contact with other medical agencies and pharmacies to secure vaccination appointments when the state pulled the vaccination clinics away from the local level. We expanded our cloud-based database and reporting system called My Senior Center, which was implemented during the pandemic in March of 2020, and were up to 1,600 registered users. Via this system, we were able to make robo-calls to our database with pertinent information. We have recently added the functionality to allow for online registration for events and programs for those who wish to do so. We launched a weekly email newsletter, which has over 850 subscribers, and we debuted the redesign of our monthly print newsletter with a bold, fresh, new look. I know many of you received this. Both have received overwhelmingly positive feedback. We conducted a naming contest for the print version of the newsletter, and the winning entry was, is named "The Walnut Street Journal", which represents a move away from the term "senior," which we're seeing. We initiated a COVID-19 volunteer grocery shopping program, which continues in operation this day and serves our at-risk members of our community. We were selected by the Massachusetts Council on Aging to partner with the Discovery Center for Civic Engagement to offer their Transition Navigator Program, which assists new retirees looking for their second act and volunteer opportunities. We also launched the UCLA Memory Training Program, which is a four-week course which teaches participants how to mitigate memory loss, which comes with normal aging. And we did see a lot of people expressing that their brains weren't working as they were used to due to the fact that they were in isolation for most of the year. Both Katie O'Brien and I received certification to teach this course, and we just completed our first four-week session with a pilot group. It was very well-received, and we look forward to offering it again in September. And also, we were voted the best department in the Milton Times Best of Awards back in April. We're consistently receiving calls from residents and families looking for assistance, information, and referrals for Adult Day Health Centers, affordable housing, home health care, food, heating, and utility assistance, health insurance and Medicare issues, Meals on Wheels registration, social services, support, and transportation. We built an extensive database, and we continue to build a database of resources to share with residents who need it. For transportation, since May of 2020, we have provided 3,500 rides to medical appointments and grocery shopping. We've added 60 new users to our transportation program. We're seeing many more requests for wheelchair lift transportation. Families who can no longer transport a loved one who is wheelchair-bound are calling us. We have two vehicles, two out of the five vehicles in our fleet are wheelchair-accessible, and their capacity is rapidly filling. And some of the vehicles in the USA, the COA fleet are nearing the end of their useful lives. In terms of programming, we offered 90 unique programs throughout this past year with 650 sessions and 7,000 registered sign-ins, and that was during the pandemic. This programming include in-person, hybrid, meaning shown on Zoom and in-person, or on Milton Access TV and in-person, Milton Access TV only, and we did our fun drive-by grab-and-goes, which were very popular. We offer weekly Zoom workshops and provided one-on-one tutorials. Over 200 people were educated on the use of the Zoom technology. Once people became more comfortable using Zoom, we branched out of the teaching mode, and we now showcase a different topic each week, such as talks with various Milton officials, the Better Business Bureau, educating people on scams, and AAA safe driving skills. We ran programs on memoir writing, genealogy, gunslingers, musical events, floral arranging and painting, sports, and art history. Currently, there are eight weekly in-person exercise classes from strength and balance to line dancing to pickleball down at Kelly Field with over 150 participants. We've collaborated with the Canton and Dedham Council on Agings to form partnerships where we shared Zoom programming during the pandemic. We're partnering with Dedham on two upcoming day trips, one to the Cape Cod Canal and one up to New Hampshire for the foliage. In April, we initiated our Short Explore Program, where we're taking trips to local nonprofit cultural institutions such as the Wakefield Estate, Eustace Estate, Forbes House Museum, and the Milton Farmers' Market. We have a walk over the Milton Cemetery coming up in July, and scheduled visits to local shopping centers for shopping and lunch. Our monthly grab-and-gos, which I mentioned, where participants drove up during the pandemic and received a meal or a sweet treat delivered through their car window, is a wonderful opportunity, a good excuse to give people to get out of their homes and drive through on a safe basis. We dressed up in themed costumes to provide some comic relief. We have a pop-up art gallery in our living room here, where we're showcasing Milton artists, as well as the work our members created during the numerous art classes we were able to provide in partnership with the Milton Arts Center. And those programs were kindly sponsored by the Milton Cultural Council and the Milton Women's Club. These programs included acrylics, watercolors, and sketching, and these will continue in the coming months. In conjunction with the Milton Public Library, we are co-sponsoring intergenerational Tai Chi as part of their Milton Moves Initiative, and we are sharing our wonderful Tai Chi instructor with the town. And these will, these classes will begin, they'll be Thursday evenings at 7:00 beginning July 8th on the basketball court on Clap Street. We initiated a series of programs geared toward healthy and safe aging in place, which included workshops on home modifications and decluttering. And we presented a program in partnership with the Mass Bar Association on legal documents everybody should have in place to ensure their wishes are known. We also conducted two successful shred days, one in December of 2020 and one in May. And we're planning an open house in September, we don't have the date set yet, where we'd like to invite Milton residents age 60 and over who are not familiar with our services, who may think they're not ready to come to us, to see what we're all about. More information will be coming out soon on that. And I'd like to thank my dedicated and hard-working administrative staff of Katie O'Brien, Julie McIntyre, and Wendy Daly, and transportation team, Joe Mern, John Daly, Phil Plageman, Billy Curran, Hugh McCusker, and Stephen Stockbridge. And I'd like to thank very much the staffs of Consolidated Facilities, IT, and DPW, who always return, respond to our calls for assistance in a timely and professional manner. And I do have just a quick slideshow of photos of sort of a year in review. So this was our very first event that we brought back in May of 2020, and this was the walking group. So you can see they're masked and six feet apart. This was coffee and tea on the patio, which we were so fortunate to have the space to utilize. And this became very popular because people really didn't have any other option to visit restaurants and things like that. So we had coffee on the patio. This was an early exercise class back in May. This was one of our watercolor classes taught by an instructor from the Milton Arts Center. We held outside when we couldn't have indoor activities. Tai Chi on the basketball court. That's, we were up to over 35 weekly participants in Tai Chi. This is our fabulous ukulele group. We have a core group of 10 men and women who come weekly to practice, and they've been steadily improving. They put on a nice concert for us last week. They have a lot of fun. Our book club men on the patio. This is meditation. We had Christine Paxia do floral arranging outside in the parking lot. And some painting classes, again, outdoors. And there's the tent, you can see. It was in the fall. Here are our grab-and-go monthly events where we dressed up, our fabulous band drivers, a very cold and brisk coffee and tea on the patio, that is, our Thanksgiving grab-and-go where it rained. Shred Day in December with Officer Patty Manaville, elder affairs officer, helping us out. Another floral arranging. That was for the holidays. Here's our holiday grab-and-go. So we provided a smile as well as a treat. Chicken soup. We dressed up as the French chef. And Valentine's Day, February, and St. Patrick's Day. Another floral arranging. They were well-received. Walking group, May, oh, that was April. April brings May flowers. So this was one of our first excursions over to Castle Island back in May. We'd begun those, and this was May flowers. Successful shred day. And yoga on the lawn. Trip to the Wakefield Estate. We had a DJ Dogs, who has a hot dog cart and does DJ with 50s and 60s musical Bingo. That was National Donut Day. And our knitters have come back, our ukulele players. This is the concert from last week where we had an ice cream truck and
That was the ice cream truck.
It was a wonderful welcome back. And this was a trip just this past Monday into the Swan Boats and lunch over at Sullivan's at Castle Island. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Stanton. We appreciate all that information. The pictures tell the story in this case. I think that's a great idea about the open house, to introduce it to people who may not be familiar with everything that goes on here in this building. So does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Christine Stanton? Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, yes. I want to compliment you and all those who are involved in the new communications approach. It's grabbed the attention of some people who, going back to something else you were referring to, didn't want to admit, that they should be engaging in programs and services that you offer. So I think you're going to see your clientele expanding in this post-pandemic period. So congratulations on that. And I've been asked to ask you about Mahjong.
Yes. Mahjong will be returning next Wednesday, 11:30. So it'll be every week, Wednesdays, 11:30 at the Council on Aging. We have a robust group who play, and we welcome new players.
So why don't you tell the rest of the board, I happened to watch the Mahjong game the other night, the satellite location in the summer. Do you know this? Do you know this? Why don't you tell them where it's held?
It's currently being held down at the Wharf on the picnic tables. Lorraine Sumner, who's a fabulous volunteer, member and volunteer for the council, runs the groups, teaches lessons. She's a wonderful asset to the community. And yes, she's relocated down to the Wharf.
I thought it was our own slot. I know, I walked, I came upon it the other day. I'm like, what is this? Quite the operation she's running down there. Beautiful, couldn't be in a better spot to stand here and do it.
I'm a Mahjong player as well, and once you learn it, you really get bitten by the bug. It's really, it's a fun game.
Anyone else? Anything for Ms. Stanton?
Mr. Dennehy?
One more thing. I just want to congratulate Christine. I mean, she took the position right before COVID.
Before COVID.
And, you know, one of your biggest days was the St. Patrick's Day luncheon, and this was the first building that closed. So very happy to have this building back open. You and your staff have done an unbelievable job. What many of the viewing audience probably don't know is Christine is an avid golfer, and she had her first hole at once
I saw.
At the 13th hole at President's.
President's.
I've been playing President's Golf Course for 20 years, and I never even birdied the hole.
I'm still in disbelief.
Did you go to the clubhouse afterwards and tell anyone?
Well, we kind of, we kept it on the hush-hush, but I did, you know, buy my foursome drinks.
Good for you.
Congratulations. And thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much. Thanks for a great report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you show Mike how to get a hole in one?
Next item on our agenda is appointments to the Council on Aging's Board of Directors.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, do you want to go, I'll make a motion to reappoint Lorraine Sumner of 129 Thatcher Street, Jean Leslie of 121 Otis Street, Luis Viveras of 22 Mount Laurel Path, the COA Board of Directors to a three-year term, and to reappoint Darlene Harris, Deborah Neely of 23 Russell Street, Mary Jane Campbell of 22 Mount Laurel Path, Marjorie Mahoney of 50 Elliott Street, Mary Ellen Sullivan of 50 Elliott Street, Margaret Flaherty of 24 Brackett Street, and associate members of the COA Board and Directors to the same one-year term. I believe that's supposed to be, is that to say?
To serve.
Sir, okay, to serve a one-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Doyle. Any discussion? Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, if I may, back in May, we committed to the Equity Committee that we would improve our efforts to communicate to residents who might be interested in these type of appointments when they were being made in order to try to increase access to members of the community who might not have had that access to those kinds of appointments before. And I'm just wondering if we've included these opportunities in terms of that kind of communication and access to members of the community who might not have been previously aware of these kinds of appointments. So.
I believe that this and other committees have been sent over to the Equity and Justice Committee. All of these people that are mentioned in the motion that Mr. Wells just made are reappointments. I think there are some additional open seats
Yes.
On this board, because we've, just going through the list, there's at least one person who has sadly passed away, and there may be others who have stepped down. So I think we have some additional appointments. may be others who have stepped down. So I think we have some additional appointments that could be made at a later date. But my understanding is this committee and all others that are on the agenda this evening and in the next few months have been sent to the Equity and Justice Committee to see if they can help us identify additional candidates.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So if there's nothing else, we'll take a vote. All in favor then. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zillis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Will we go back to roll columns? Did everybody tell us to do it?
Oh, that's right. We don't need roll columns.
What are we doing?
It's a habit.
Oh, my God.
Let's just finish it with Mr. Wells.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. So we should note in the minute, Suzy, that was a roll call, even though it didn't need to be.
Okay.
All right. We have our tree ward in here, Mr. Branch Lane.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you.
A document?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Branch Lane, if you'll come up and join us, and we're going to put up a sort of PowerPoint.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Chase is with him.
All right. DPW Director Chase Berkeley is also here. Chase, if you'd like to join us, please feel free.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Branch.
Thank you, Branch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Branch.
All right. Thanks for the invitation. Unfortunately, you're sort of ruining a great event that's happening in the baseball world tonight. One of my P-We League guys is going to try to beat up on the Red Sox. Okay. I've been invited, I guess, to talk about the trees in front of Town Office Building. No, no go?
I am doing my best.
Unfortunately, I forgot the most important item of the bill. Okay. As you folks know, and it has been pointed out to you, thank you, Katie, Melinda, Richard, Michael, Arthur, Michael, Suzanne, for having me today. It's been pointed out that the two sugar maple trees directly in front of Town Hall are failing, one of which is a hazard tree at this point. It's virtually dead. Out there the other day, as I walked it, there was a four-inch caliber piece of wood on the ground that has fallen off that tree. That tree should be removed almost immediately or as soon as recently possible. The second tree could be pruned, but it is in such a bad condition, it shows disease and insect damage throughout. They really both should be taken down at the same time because, as I say, the second tree, the one to the right, is very close behind the first one. And the first one, as I say, should go immediately. Now, obviously, there's a cost involved, and unfortunately, I brought my cost-involved sheet, which Suzanne was trying to get up on.
I see your home.
Well, no, I'll just talk it. It's an expensive proposition, as you well might imagine, two 36, 40-inch trees. So if I could get back to Chase's... So, and I've had discussion with Tom McCarthy, Chase, and Jeffrey from, Richard Hunt, Jeffrey Hunt from the Hunt Tree Service. The group which has a contract with the town for providing tree removal service. So in any event, they are giving a price to remove the trees.
Here it comes, Branch.
Okay, good.
How old would they, you say those are?
She's still, I'm gonna, 100? I mean, they are very, very old trees.
So they go back to the original Town Hall?
They could very well have been there. As a matter of fact, I'm sure that they were there for the original Town Hall. Okay. As you see in the right-hand column, they're talking about to remove the two trees at the rate of 3,900, for which they have a contract with the town. The second item is not a contract item, but it's for removal of the stumps. You really can't take the trees out of there without removing the stumps. That's the right-hand column. In the left-hand column, excuse me, they are proposing to provide two autumn blaze, Acer rubrum trees, red maple trees, three- to four-inch caliber, and the two trees in place at 3,500. The price is okay, but I'm a little skeptical of putting a four-inch tree in there because the larger caliber, the larger tree you put in on a site, the more care it requires. And I'm not confident that we have the kind of care necessary to keep a tree like that and get it to thrive. You know, a four-inch caliber tree, to me, is like an estate tree or a commercial tree, where you've got a lot of, you know, money invested in as to how you can take care of it, water it almost daily, you know. It needs constant care. What I would like to do, if possible, and unfortunately, I missed it tonight, there was a meeting of your shade tree advisory committee. You know, it might not be a bad idea to run this by them, the proposal on the trees, because I'm sure that Carol Starker will be negative, and she'll want to go some amount smaller. I know Kristen would probably want to go smaller, because, as they say, it's a lot easier to get a success rate on a smaller tree than it is a four-inch tree. That's a big tree. So in any event, that's pretty much the story. I don't know if, you know, if you'd want to make this a voteable item. You know, I'm thinking that Michael and Chase and Tom could resolve this. If you would allow, I would let the, I would suggest maybe letting the tree committee weigh in. I know that the red maple, the Acer rubrum, is on our present tree list. And interestingly, I gave you folks a copy of a letter that just came to me today from Nancy regarding their meeting tonight. And you can see that they've got like two pages of suggestions. And those folks are planning for trees that are going to be good in 80 years. So they really work at this. I mean, they're looking for global warming and try to plan for it in advance, which is kind of cool, actually. You know, these guys are dogs. I mean, they work with Chase and McCarthy and, you know, like Chase will tell you, they're working at it constantly. They're a great group. They really are. So anyway, those are a couple of my suggestions. Let me see. They were evaluated by the local arborist, and he's on board with those suggestions. And that's about it. I just want to, I didn't realize Chase was going to be here. I hate to say something nice about him when he's sitting here, but, you know.
First time for everything.
He's, you know, he really has done a great job as far as trees concerned. I mean, he's a real advocate for that group and for us and for the town. You know, we had been using contract tree planting up until probably, I don't know, two years ago, something like that. And, you know, my observation was that the town guys could do better. You know, they have the necessary skills. They're good at it. They can do it more economically than the contractors. And Chase has changed that method, and he is now using the town forces for tree planting. You know, if you get into, you know, they would be good for up to two, two and a half. You know, if you get into three, three and a half, those kind of trees, you really have to have it done by contract, because you almost need a spade, specialized equipment to do it. So anyway, that's my brief overview.
Did you write this last page?
Oh, I almost forgot. That's the most important part.
You're lucky I'm here.
Sheekers creepers.
Because I recognize the names, and I'm like...
God, I forget half my stuff. And then, yeah, on the last page, you have an artist concept of a Town Office Building. And for a lot of you folks who may not know, of the five trees that are sort of placed on the middle portion of Island there, and on the left side and on the right side, three of those five trees were dedicated to people. Frankie Simoldoro, an Old Public Works employee in the far right. Johnny Driscoll planted a tree on the far left in dedication to his dad. And we planted a tree on the left side, on the inner part of the peninsula there, and was dedicated to Larry DeSalle. So if you end up with two new trees to put in those spaces, you know, it would be a nice gesture, I think, to figure out, you know, who they might be dedicated to. So anyway, that's just a suggestion also. Jeez, thank you, Richard.
When I saw the names, I'm like Frankie, Larry, and John. So John Driscoll's dad was a multi-firefighter.
Yeah.
We all know Larry DeSalle was longtime DPW Director and Town Engineer, and Frankie Simoldoro was probably paved more driveways in this town than anyone I can remember.
Yeah, yeah. It was a great gang.
Longtime DPW reporter.
Yep. So that's my talk for the evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Branch. Chase, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'll just add quickly, you know, it's always very hard to replicate such an enormous tree with a new planting. So there will be a sense of loss, no matter what. But, you know, we do want to minimize the risk by getting those two down because they are beyond their useful life at this point. So we could certainly fast-track the removal and, you know, decide how best to plant. But, you know, inevitably, there'll be a little bit of a hole there for some time.
Just not to interrupt, it would be not prudent to plant those now until at least September.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone, any comments or questions? Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Branch, I want to thank you for being here, and Chase as well. And I agree with you about the quality of what the Shade Tree Advisory Committee has presented in this document.
Chase will tell you.
I also want to note what you said about the longevity of trees, and different species have different lifespans, which oftentimes get overlooked. And I was wondering, since both of these proposed trees are of the same genre, whether or not, considering the possibility of disease and how disease will easily move from one tree of the same species to another, and maybe different lifespans, whether or not that is the best model, or should there be two different types of trees?
Well...
And I don't, I put this out as a rhetorical question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no.
Not for any reason, just because...
And that is considered to be a more modern way to look at planting, street tree planting, you know, to try to mix variety in so that they will, you know, you won't have elm disease completely deforest the whole area. I don't know. There are three red maple trees there now, and it seems like, you know, the red maple is considered to be a tree with good longevity, resistant, native. It's on the tree committee's list. I would, you know, you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but I would feel comfortable with red maple trees there. And again, you could, you know, we could present it to the committee and say, hey, what do you guys think? Because that's on their mind. It really is on their mind.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
Well, I was just wondering, since we have that 360th initiative, if there's an opportunity to save some of the wood from one of the trees to use in some way. I don't know. Just a thought.
They do. You can buy it in a square cardboard box that costs $9, and they're available all throughout town. Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot. I was only teasing you.
No, you're welcome.
I agree. I think there's an operational thing. We talked about this when we first saw this. I think the one that you first described, Branch, you know, has the possibility of becoming a widow maker on the next high breeze. So I think...
Yeah, that's in tough shape.
...to get that out is probably good. But I think operationally, we have a great team. I think they can get the removal done pretty quickly. And then, can I just ask one question? What's the green bags about? What are those green bags?
Oh, dude.
Around the base of new trees?
They're watering devices. I notice that, you know, the state, you know, must pay an awful lot of money, because if you go down the parkway...
Right. They're on every tree that the...
You know, they're double-staked. And those, they're called gator bags. And the theory is, and apparently they work fairly well, there's a green bag, and if it's empty, it looks all compressed. And they'll take 20 gallons of water, so that if you fill them, they'll eventually just let the water seep into the plant. I don't know the timeframe. You know, it probably might take a week or something for that bag to drain. But that's what they're used for. Like I noticed on the parkway, they're double-bagged.
Yes.
You know, they got stakes in two bags. I mean, each one of those trees, they must, they must cost a couple of thousand bucks.
We have a new one in Crane Field that doesn't have any. And that's why I'm not but watering myself, because for years Duffy and, they used to, they ran, they'd run 300 feet of hose every Saturday and go over water.
Oh, I know.
People have no idea what it takes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, you know, like I've said to our committee, you know, the gator bags are good, but, you know, 60, 70-year-old people, are they going to lug 20 gallons of water? Four, five-gallon pails fall out and fill them? I mean, you've got to fill them with a hose, almost. You know, the concept is nice. And Chase's crew now does have a watering truck.
I'm seeing a Saran Sunday.
Yeah.
That's named around Sunday.
Yeah. So, you know, they've built up the fleet a little bit in order to accommodate this stuff. But anyway, that's what those green bags are.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I just, I saw them all on the DCRs. I'm like, what is the purpose of those?
Yeah, yeah.
And it had something to do with water. I thought it just caught rainwater. I had no idea that you could fill them up.
No, no. You have to fill them. Yep.
I'd just add that they've greatly cut down on the attrition of new planted trees. So it's phenomenal application.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone have anything else for Mr. Berkeley or Mr. Lane? I think that going to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is a good idea. And maybe we could ask that you do that, and then maybe talk with the town administrator, and we'll figure out what the next steps might be. I agree that this is operational. We probably can...
Yeah, I mean, I definitely...
You know, if the board agrees, we can ask the town administrator to take the lead on this.
Sure.
Great. Madam Chair, I think the September planting is also great advice. That gets us through the summer concerts areas and the busy activity. But town halls have been very busy lately, just with people being outside and using that area. So...
Okay.
But I think the necessity to get them down as quickly as Mr. Lane and Mr. Berkeley says is also the necessity.
Agreed.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in tonight. Mr. Berkeley, if you want to stay, I know you're here for a traffic item. I think at this point, we have a couple of others here from municipal broadband. We should probably take us some items out of order and go to the number 15 next, which is the traffic rules. Is that the only item that Mr. Berkeley's here for? Why don't we do that, and then we can go to broadband? And then we'll come back to the other items that don't require people to wait around. Thank you, Branch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that.
All right. So we're on to item number 15, and we will come back to 13 and 14.
Good night, Branch.
Thank you, Branch.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. So the Traffic Commission met on June 9th to discuss a few requests that we had received from residents. One of those resulted in a recommendation for an amendment to the articles. So that's on Bryant Avenue. We received a request from the owner through their attorney of 25 Bryant Avenue, which is commonly known as the Empire Building, which has been newly purchased and renovated. Renovations are underway right now. There's going to be a dentist office put into that building. So the parking spots right in front of that building... So the parking spots right in front of that building are service-owned right now, from Boulevard Street to about halfway to State Street, and then for the other half of that portion, up to State Street, they're two-hour parking. So the request was basically just to switch those two designations, so that the service owners moved further away, and the two-hour parking is moved in front of the building, where they're expecting to have a lot more traffic in and out, that are staying for shorter durations, dentist appointments, and whatever else might show up in that building. So the Traffic Commission unanimously supported that, and has recommended it here. And just, just to note, since we're talking about the building, so there was also an opportunity in the East Milton Square Deck project to address the entrance way to that building, which the state worked with us. So there used to be a step into the front door of the building, and they were able to reconfigure the sidewalks in the project now, so that's ADA accessible right into the front door. So that's a good win, too, to get that done at the same time.
That's great. Anyone, any questions on this item, comments?
I'll make a motion for a purpose discussion, Madam Chair, to approve the amendments to the true traffic rules and orders of Boulevard Street to State Street of Article 5, Section 2, exchanging location for two-hour parking with service-owned areas to better accommodate the, excuse me, accommodate the new commercial space.
Second. Any, for, any discussion? If not, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Oh, actually, we don't have to do a quirk anymore, all in favor.
Aye.
We're vigilant.
That's unanimous.
We kind of grab every second we can.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could, just, there is no, there is no change in the number of parking spots available in that stretch, just for the public, being on, I know parking is extremely limited these days in East Milton Square, but just, there's no net effect to the parking, there's no loss of parking battery.
That's good news.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
All right, Mr. Berkeley, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. I believe we have guests here for number 18, which is the Municipal Broadband Committee, and we'll ask Mr. Zulus to lead this discussion, and if you would please come up and join us at the microphone, feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I believe we have Mr. Lynch and Mr. Day. And Mark, do you want to come up as well?
Yes.
And I'll let, yeah, that'd be great, yeah, thank you. So Rob Lynch and Mark Day are members of the Municipal Broadband Committee, and the purpose tonight is to inform the board about the need for a take rate survey in order to advance the, the planning, and, and to see if we have the opportunity to access American Recovery Plan funds for the purposes of broadband. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Lynch and Mr. Day, they can lead us through the presentation.
Thank you, Mike, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you, yeah, we do have a, a brief presentation for you today that Mark was nice enough to put together for us, and that I'm going to mostly take us through, but Mark's free to chime in if he'd, if he'd like to. So, next slide, please. So, just to outline what we're going to talk about today, we're just going to give you a quick update on where we are in our process, what a take rate survey is, why we need one, and where we are in terms of obtaining take rate surveys. Next slide, please. So, as you know, the, the committee has been studying the efficacy of replacing the, the town's institutional broadband network, the INET, and in conjunction with that, also providing, potentially providing broadband service to residential consumers as well. And when I say residential, I also include businesses in the town as well, but most of the customers would naturally be residential based on the makeup of the town. So the, for the INET, the committee's made significant progress in that respect, we've received, as you know, we received a report from a third-party consultant outlining the process and giving us a price estimate for that. So we're at the point now where we're looking at, we're still investigating the cost and the scope of the residential service, and one key part of that, which, which what I'll, I'll get to in our due diligence, is the take rate survey. So, next slide, please. So this is here where we have where some of our cost estimates so far, as I mentioned, CTC, the consultant that did the estimates for the INET, estimated it around a million, I think $1.2 million, we've put one to two there, just to kind of be safe, because, you know, the, the estimate will have to be updated slightly for inflation, and obviously just to put in some wiggle room there. As I mentioned, we don't have an estimate really yet for the residential piece, as we still need to do the take rate as part of our, crucial part of our due diligence. Now, and we do, of course, naturally, so the INET itself would be, is serving just the town facilities, while the rest is obviously going to be a much bigger project, much more, you know, wire to drop and maintenance, so it would be a bigger cost than the, the INET itself. And so obviously, with, with more cost, you know, requires more due diligence on our part in advising the select board. So how, now, when there's cost, obviously, the question is how are we going to pay for it? What the committee is considering is for the INET itself, that could be a good use of the, the town's ARPA funds. Infrastructure is one of the usable, is allowable to be used for ARPA funds, and broadband is considered part of infrastructure, so that could be a good fit for the town there to have that portion. Now, for the residential service, we would imagine that that would be funded through the sale of bonds, you know, purchased by institutional investors, and so there wouldn't be any need to use the town's tax revenues or to increase taxes. The, now, that, so that, that capital raised would be really to lay the infrastructure itself, now how it would be maintained would be through subscriber fees, so much like now with your internet service, you pay, you know, X dollars a month, that X dollars a month would be funding a subscriber fee for the, the residential service itself from the town. So now, how are we going to figure out that number? That's where the take rate comes in, so, next slide, please. So what is a take rate? So a take rate is really a subscriber study. So what we're asking here is essentially, at what price point would people in the town be willing to, be interested in taking town-provided broadband internet service? And in conjunction with that, you know, at what price point, but also at what speeds? So there's a lot of variables there, you know, you know, at gig speed, what price would you be willing to pay? Do you need gig speed? So there's a lot of kind of questions like that that need to be asked. You know, how do you use your internet right now? Do you, how many people in your household? Do you, you know, do you rely on it for a lot of streaming? Is it just emails? You know, do you work from home? Are you happy with your current service? What could be better about your service? So all these, all these questions are designed to get an indication of what the likelihood is that a subscriber would actually, or a potential subscriber, I should say, would actually subscribe to the service, you know, once the infrastructure was laid. So take rate is crucial to the long-term viability of the project. Now, we think this is a significant and very important investment for the town, and something that could be very fruitful and valuable for the town for, for decades to come, but the key part of that is the take rate survey. If it's a low take rate, then it's either going to have to be higher subscription fees, and, and, you know, that could create problems itself if it, if it, higher prices could even, you know, cause lower subscriptions after that. So we'd want to make sure we had a healthy take rate before we started this project, with the hope that that take rate would continue to build over time as people were satisfied with the service, and, and, you know, more people switched over as it went along. So this is key for the project's financial viability. Next slide, please. So as, as I mentioned, we don't know what our take rate is until we actually do the survey. These are some of the questions I was mentioning before, that we, you know, we want to be really scientific in this, we don't want, we want to avoid as much as possible, you know, like, for lack of a better word, fluff and then bias. So, and by fluff, I mean, you know, broad questions that don't really drill down into, you know, price and speed and those crucial aspects that I mentioned. And also, too, to the extent we can, we want to avoid bias, so we, we want to set up a survey that doesn't just attract either people that have a strongly positive opinion or a strongly negative opinion to municipal broadband. We'd like to get, you know, an honest swath of, of town opinions to be as scientific about this as possible. And, you know, even, even with this, this is really just an estimate, but it's, it's the, you know, the most scientific approach that we can take to determining if this would be a viable project or not. And, and as I, as there's a note there, so, you know, the survey would be better as well if it's carried out by, you know, a third party with expertise in marketing services, you know. We could try to do it ourselves, we could try to, you know, contact people in the town, but really, the data aggregation and the data analysis, you know, I think the town would be much better served to have a, a third party do it, rather than, you know, volunteers on the committee. Next slide, please. So we're at the point now where, you know, we're, we're moving along briskly, because we know that, you know, we'd like to, the ARPA funds, we would like to, you know, keep our, keep our foot on the pedal there in that respect, and also, too, we know that, you know, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year here, so we've, we've been pounding the pavement, looking for some, some vendor bids, and we have received some written commitments in the last few days, or at the very least, some not-to-exceed quotes from potential vendors. As you see up there, we have, we've received four of those back, I believe we contacted at least six of, six vendors, and so we've gotten four responses. So, you know, we got a written proposal from Magellan for 17.5,000, and Uptown Services gave us 29 as the max, but also various cheaper options. So the quote, and I apologize, that, that low number there is actually 15,000, it should be, so the range is 15,000 to 30. Uptown had the, the lowest number there, 15,000. So the, the prices, so the methodology that we've seen so far from the vendors, either through the proposals they've written, or from what they've told us, or, you know, written out in, in their fixed not-to-exceed quotes there, the methodology varies, and also with that variance of methodology, that impacts the prices. So on the cheaper side are online and email-only surveys, and on the more expensive side are the more, our phone and, you know, mail surveys that, you know, require more legwork on the part of the consultants. So what, so, next slide, please. So what we're, so what we'd like to do is to be able to review these proposals and, you know, discuss them and figure out, you know, try to get a sense of what we think is, is the right methodology. Is it, is it a better call to be, is it more scientific and a, and a better call to, to use phone surveys, or, you know, mail surveys? Or is it, you know, is it, is it okay to just rely on email and online surveys, or should we try to find some combination of it? So what we respectfully request is that $30,000 be allocated, which is, which matches the, the highest not-to-exceed quote that we received, to be allocated while we review these plans at our, at our next committee meeting, and then we would make a determination, come back to the select board, and make a recommendation to you of what we think would be the, the best consultant and the best proposal to go with for this take rate survey. And, you know, as I, as we put down there below, you know, if a lower bid is selected, then the excess funds will be returned or distributed at your direction. Next slide, please. I think that's it, that's it, okay.
Are there any other documents you'd like me to?
So, no, just to mention that, so we did receive proposals from Magellan and from Uptown that I, that I did, I sent to Susie, so those will be available for you to take a look at as well. And then we received just some email, you know, shorthand quotes until those other two vendors were, are able to give us a, a full proposal.
Mr. Zulus.
So Madam Chair, if I may, thank you, thank you, Rob, thank you, Mark. I think this is a candidate for a reserve fund transfer. I think it is unforeseen in the respect that we didn't know last spring prior to town meeting whether ARPA funds would be directed towards municipal broadband. Now we know that municipal broadband is one of the three areas of infrastructure that's provided for under the American Rescue Plan. And number two, the, the, the need is immediate because those funds are going to be allocated. And we've already, the town has already received half of the funds, and those funds, the town will go about allocating those funds, and we think that in order to make a, a proposal, a vetted proposal, that, for those funds, that a take rate survey is important in order to do that. Just to, just to point out a couple of things to elaborate a little bit on what Rob said, the, the INET, or the institutional network that will be for town government and the schools and the police and fire, Comcast has told us that they're not going to, they don't want to support that going forward, they didn't want to support it the last contract. We're going to have to come up with a plan for an INET. And the, the INET can also serve as the backbone for the resident, the resident, resident broadband as well.
Right, right.
So, so it is interconnected. I think that there is an argument to make, I, I would make the argument that this need is unforeseen, immediate, and I think, given that if we're going to ask for, if, if the board is willing to delegate to the chair the authority to approve a reserve fund transfer and send it to the warrant committee, we could, our board, our, our committee, Municipal Broadband Committee, could, next Monday at its meeting, make a recommendation for a vendor. There would be an amount associated with that, and then the chair, if delegated the authority, could approve that amount and send it on to the warrant committee chair for approval prior to the end of the fiscal year. So that's the process, that's one plausible process, and if the board is, the board is willing to do that.
Mr. Wells?
So I'm willing to, so you're proposing, if I made a motion right now, so I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to approve a reserve fund transfer up to $30,000?
I think for the purposes of, I think that's right, although I think we may want to say, for the purposes of our procurement rules, we may want to say $29,000, $29,999, around $30,000.
Wait, is 30, is that what it is? 30, we don't have to, we don't have to?
I'll check with Mike Kelly.
I'll say, alright.
But I think that would get us there.
So I would make a motion to authorize the chair to approve a reserve fund transfer up to $29,999 to be directed towards the Municipal Broadband Committee for this, for the second.
Take rates.
Take rate survey.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, and I think, actually, friendly amendment, and to forward it to the warrant committee, originally, I think we should say.
That'd be up to them.
Ultimately, it's up to them, but.
And to be forwarded to the warrant committee.
Any discussion on the motion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Do we have anything else on this item?
Thank you to, to the committee, to Rob, and to Mark, and to Joe Chamberlain, and to John Sullivan for, for moving on this, and this committee's been meeting just about every Monday morning at 8:00 since January, putting a lot of work in. What, 8:10? Yeah. Times 8:10, sometime, yeah. But this committee's been working very hard since January, and, and has a lot of work still to do over the next several months, but, but the work is certainly there. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks for coming in, thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Okay, so, when we, no one else is here for any presentation, so why don't we go back to item 13, which is the town meeting warrant for October 25th, which will be here before we know it? So the agenda item is to open the warrant, we've already approved the closing date in the, in the tentative schedule, and I think the newspaper ad is ready to go in, probably, Susie? Okay. And then a potential, discussion of potential warrant articles, and one that we've listed is small cell wireless facility zoning, which relates to the 5G technology, and our board two years ago had put a policy in place with the idea that we would try to ask the planning board to put some zoning in place, and bring zoning to town meetings, so that's a potential article, I think it would be a planning board article rather than one of our articles, but I've forwarded some information on that to the chair of the planning board and the planning director. So tonight, or at a future meeting, before we close the warrant on July 28th, would be an opportunity for our board to either bring up some ideas, or for warrant articles, either an article itself or a topic for. either an article itself, or a topic for an article that we might want to consider submitting. I don't know if anyone has one in mind already. Ms. Collins?
I know, I was just saying, Mr. Zulus does.
Yeah, Madam Chair, well, Madam Chair, just to elaborate on the last discussion, depending on how things go over the next few weeks, you may, the broadband committee may well propose to this board an article for a second vote on a municipal-led plan, and for funding, although it's unclear whether there'd be funding at an October town meeting, we may have to wait till May, but there may well be at least one article on municipal broadband, and we'll make sure to have it in prior to the 28th.
Okay. Did you be asking our board to submit?
That you'd be, yes, sorry, yes, that would be recommended to this board.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
The only other potential, just subject to one of the executive session discussions tonight, one of those could potentially be, if it would go fairly, a town meeting article, which I believe would be in October, if we could get it to go.
Okay.
One that we've been working on for the past few months, we're not there yet, but.
Okay. Well, we have a couple of additional meetings before then to discuss anything.
Just give me a place, all this.
Do we need a motion?
Before I forget them.
Do we want a motion to open the warrant?
I just, I was going to do that, I don't see why. I'll make a motion to open, I didn't see it, but I'll make a motion to open the, oh, I lost it, what, item thirteen?
Thirteen.
I'll make a motion to open the 2021 Milton Town Meeting Warrant and Discussion Potential Warrant Articles, open a warrant for the town meeting of October 25th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. All right, so any other articles, we'll, we have meetings on July 14th and the 28th, so we have two additional meetings to talk about those, so. Okay, it sounds like we may have a few, and we'll check in with the planning board to see what they're working on. Item fourteen relates to reserve fund and year-end transfers.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to approve and forward to the warrant committee FY21 reserve fund and year-end transfers. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we've covered fifteen. Number sixteen is, relates to select board members' committee appointments and reappointments. So, we began this discussion at a prior meeting where we talked about which committees we're all currently serving on. I think everyone either had a list, or remembers what we're all serving on, or Susie had circulated a list.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet. So, we made, we talked about some potential changes a couple of meetings ago when we were still on Zooms, that was prior to June 15th, and then we also talked about, I think it was Arthur's suggestion, to make all of the appointments effective July 1st. Did we vote on that? I think we, I think we did vote to make the appointments effective July 1st. If we didn't vote, I think we had a consensus.
I don't know if we did, but if we.
Okay. It may have just been a consensus.
We definitely discussed it.
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone, is there anything, any committee in particular that anyone would like to start with, or, I know Arthur has expressed an interest in the Finance Committee, and I had indicated I would be willing to step down from that committee. Other changes?
I'll stay where I'm at. If I could, if that's okay.
So, currently, we have Affordable Housing Trust, that would be me. Housing Committee is Melinda, and Arthur is on as a Master Plan Committee member. Capital Improvement Planning Committee is Richard. Finance Committee has been Mike Zulus and me, and I think would be Arthur and Mike, if we were to make that vote tonight. Master Planning Impeachment Committee is Mr. Doyle. Max Shuland Rink is Mr. Wells. Milton Landing Committee has been Mr. Wells and myself. I have the Pilot Committee, Policy Committee has been Mr. Zulus and Ms. Collins. Youth Task Force has been Mr. Zulus, as well as Municipal Broadband Committee, and Fire Station Building Committee Liaison is Mr. Wells. So, those are the current assignments, and the proposed change would be for the Finance Committee, for Arthur to replace me on the Finance Committee. Anyone else, any changes, comments? Any discussion?
Make that as a motion, as you read, as you noted, if everyone's all right, Melinda.
Sounds good to everyone.
Do I move the approval of the Select Board Members Committee Appointments as noted effective July 1, 2021?
Okay. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seventeen, we've styled this a couple of ways on the agenda. One is to, the first thing that we had talked previously about doing is increasing the membership of the local Historic District Study Committee from five members to seven members. So, we had previously discussed that, so we should vote that tonight. We have three additional members to appoint. We've already appointed four members representative of organizations like the Realtors Association, Architectural Recommendations. So, we have multiple candidates for three positions, I think it's fourteen candidates. When Mr. Doyle and Mr. Denny and I were putting the, and Ms. Stewart were putting the agenda together, Arthur mentioned that we might want to consider designating a member of our board to work with the Historical Commission to recommend a slate of three of the fourteen candidates.
Because I know what I was going to say, if you do.
And where it's getting late, that might, that probably was a very forward-thinking suggestion. So, what do the members think? Any preference?
I think that's a great suggestion. The only question would be who wants to be designated?
Any volunteers?
I'm happy to do it. I've been through all the candidates, you know, online, checking them out, and I'm happy to actually call people and work with somebody from the Historical Commission, that would be great.
Okay, and we do have a Historical Commission member already appointed, though, I think that's Mr. Mullins, so.
Right, so perhaps he would be willing to help in that regard.
Yeah, or Mr. O'Donnell.
So, does that limit us to two now? Does Melinda take a spot?
No.
I'm just going to help create a slate.
So, I'll move to increase the membership of the local Historic District Study Committee to seven members, and designate Melinda Collins to work with a member of the Historical Commission to recommend a slate of candidates.
Second.
Okay, seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Aye. Aye, everyone, that's a unanimous vote. Okay, we've already covered eighteen. Number nineteen, development of a five-year financial plan. So, we had our retreat on Saturday here at the Council on Aging, and going through some of the financial items that were on the board's goals and objectives list from last year. One was a long-term financial plan, and we had, at one point, considered a special committee that might do this work, but one of the things that we talked about on Saturday, which would be to ask town management, under the direction of the town administrator, to take this on, and come up with a timeline, see if we can get this to be somewhat helpful in the warrant committee process this year, and the budget process in general. So, we wanted to put it on our agenda to have a discussion. I don't think it needs to be a long discussion, but just have a discussion about this tonight, and see what Mr. Denny's thoughts are about timing, and how we might go about this, and who might be involved. We did note, we thought the schools would play an important role, obviously, in development of a five-year financial plan. Any comments? Mr. Denny?
Yeah, so I did approach a subject with Karen Pavaal, Director of Finance. When Karen got here, she was very surprised that the town didn't have an established five-year financial plan. She came from City of Brockton and City of Cambridge, where this is already an established trend, and just a fixture in their financial policies. So, definitely on board for that. She'd really like to take time to close out fiscal '21 first, and she's thinking, by the time that work gets done, and Powers and Sullivan, the town's auditors come through the doors in August, September would be very willing and able to get this process started. It will actually help in the FY23 budget submittal process from some of the departments that we can have this discussion, so we'd certainly like to entertain September as a start date for that project. We do have that DLS report, which we really haven't dived in, dove into, from October of last year. Former town accountant, Amy Dexter, probably repeating myself, but took a quick look at it prior to her moving up to public schools, and thought that something may have been off, but Karen's going to take some time to take a look at that with her staff, and then integrate conversation with the school department about how we move forward with that plan. With this board's permission, love to get that started in September.
I think that sounds reasonable, especially where there's a lot of federal funds that, you know, we need to get on top of in terms of what the requirements are, what the money can be used for, what the time it might be, so there's a lot of, in addition to the year end and the audit, there's a lot of attention right now on federal funds, and so, it sounds reasonable to me, everyone? Thoughts, Mr. Zulus?
The only thing I would add is, we do have the, we did charge a budget and advisory committee, if there are people who can help, we can try to identify them between now and September. So, I agree that certainly Mike and Karen can handle it, but if there are residents out there who could lend a hand, we can certainly use all the help we can get.
Okay, so if there are people watching who would like to apply to be on that committee, the more the merrier on this topic, right?
Appreciate that offer and the help, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we are on to the town administrators' report. Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two items. The first one is the, and with Mr. Lane in here this evening talking trees, I just want to announce again that the 360 Tree Initiative has started. The town actually received its first check today, a check from Resident Elizabeth Neville for that campaign, which has started. The idea is to plant three hundred and sixty trees on the anniversary, three hundred and sixty, sixtieth anniversary of our township. So, that project initiative is underway. People can send them to Town Hall, 525 Canton Ave, Milton, Mass. If they have any questions, they can call my office, 617-898-4845. But that tree initiative, as Branch Lane noted, I think the town of Milton was very good at taking trees down, and not very good at putting trees up, so the idea is we're playing catch-up. I think Fred Taylor would, and the State Shade Tree Advisory Committee would tell everyone that we lost a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five trees per year, so, you know, we're playing catch-up, and this initiative will really help out, so. Anyone in the viewing audience who feels to participate, feels like they should participate, should reach out. The other one is along the lines of the ARPA, another Municipal Broadband Committee talked about it, we just talked about it with the five-year financial plan. So, on Tuesday, the Treasurer's Office received the first half of the town's direct funding, so the Treasurer received a check for one million four hundred forty-four thousand fifty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Director of Finance, Karen Pavaal, myself, have been entrenching ourself in the guidance, which is starting to come fast and furious from them. One of the things is the amount of transparency that's going to be necessary for this undertaking. They're calling for municipalities to have dashboards. The preliminary step is for this board to certify any funding sources, so the money has come in, the Treasurer has called Rockland Trust and set up a bank account, it has to be in a dedicated account. He informed us today that several communities have reached out to Rockland Trust, and that seems to be the bank of choice, and they're setting up these special accounts for all of the, well, many of the municipalities around us. So, we do have the first amount of money. The process for this money, the legislation requires this board, the jurisdiction's executive, this board, to certify the funds that will be used for eligible purposes, at which point we'll have to put a dashboard up and be fully transparent on how that money is being spent. It's a little different than the CARES money. CARES money was kind of spend it and then report to the federal government on how you spent it, with permission that you spent it properly prior to, or you wouldn't be reimbursed. This is kind of, we have the money, we need to report what we're spending thoroughly and transparently, so.
CARES existed during the ecstasy of the operation, is what it was, so it was to, you know.
Yep. So, if I could, I would suggest an agenda item at the July 14th board. Kevin Freitag and Murphy Hesse-Tumey-Lahane have been working on this. Kevin briefed us on some of the do's and don'ts, so I think it would be prudent if Karen Pavaal, Treasurer McAuliffe, myself, and Kevin Freitag could present to this board about first steps, and then what some of the next steps are going to look like. This money, very welcomed, needs to be handled very carefully and very transparently, so that's the theme of this. We all have, learning the guidance of what it can be spent on, and we'll work our way through that process. But this board, as the executive jurisdiction, needs to certify those funds. This afternoon, I listened to the Norfolk County Commissioners' meeting today, great meeting, Commissioners Shea, Collins, and Stiati, and their new director, John Cronin, who I'd like to welcome. A very vibrant conversation, they've been working with both Plymouth and Bristol County to see how to handle that funding, and they're going to have a decision next week for us about how they're going to handle the funds, whether they turn it back to the state, or they just make it a pass-through to the municipalities, or if they take a percentage of it, but very vibrant discussion going on with those commissioners and the other commissioners in the other two counties that have received funding, and then they're going to report back next Wednesday, so I'll tune into that meeting at one o'clock for their meeting. So, I should have an update on that. That's roughly five point four million dollars that Milton looks to receive through the county.
So, the good, the one aspect of it is, the post-9/11, all of the terrorism money that went throughout the country, if you were asking where the regions, the county commissioners held it, handled it at that time, so they'll have an idea how to do it, you know, they do.
Yeah, and there is some guidance from Plymouth. Plymouth did receive CARES money.
Right.
As a county, they were the only one besides the City of Boston that had the population that qualified for it, in the CARES. So, they, I can, I can say they are doing this with extreme diligence, caution, and they're being very methodical about it, so we should hear more this time next week.
Okay, so we'll have more for future agenda items on that topic. Anything else, Mr. Denny?
I think that's it.
Okay.
And I mentioned Christine Tollemann. Congratulations.
Okay. All right, I have no report tonight. Do any of the members have a report? Mr. Doyle?
I just added, Madam Chair, that the Master Plan Impeachment Committee has been continuing to identify possible sites of town property for affordable housing in the future, and is planning on meeting with the Select Board Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust on this in the nudge-a-distant future.
Okay, great. Mr. Zulus?
No report, Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins?
Well, this afternoon, before our meeting, I attended the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition's training for youth adult cooperation, basically, and it was really well-attended. There were about thirty people from our government staff, but also churches and civic organizations, and there'll be a follow-up. There's already been a youth training, then today was the adult training, and then on the 7th and July, there'll be a training that everyone attends together.
That's good. I'm glad someone from the board was able to attend that. Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Oh, no report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Public comment, response? Anyone? Future agenda items. I think we should schedule for future agenda discussion to go over some of our goals and objectives from the retreat that we talked about. Anything, Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, along the lines of what you mentioned with respect to the ARPA funding, it is atypical under our structure for this board to appropriate funds, so it seems to me one of our agenda items should be determining a procedure and a protocol for which we may, we will appropriate these funds, because that's not typically what we do, and so we should have, we should develop, in addition to the transparency, we should develop a process, it seems to me, in terms of what we, how we're going to go about it.
Okay.
And how we're going to solicit feedback in connection with that.
All right, so we'll put that on for a, hopefully, a July agenda, since the funds are at hand, so we should put that on sooner rather than later. And on that note, so we have our next meetings of July 14th and 28th, and the August dates would be August 11th and 25th, but when I sent out an email just asking everyone's availability for the summer months, both Ms. Collins and Mr. Wells had conflicts on the 11th, so do we want to reschedule? We don't have to do it tonight, we can, we can figure it out, but we may want to consider either a different date for August 11th, or just meeting once, but I think there'll be a pretty long time to go without having a meeting, so we might want to schedule something for the week before, if that works for everyone. So, something to keep in mind, and we can, maybe we can ask Susie to coordinate with everyone in terms of schedules for the summer.
We're not even at the 4th of July, and we just whip right through the whole summer just like that, it's gone, without even getting the sunburned.
Did anyone else have any future agenda items to add? Mr. Denny?
Just a Community Preservation Act Committee next steps, just July 1st will be on us pretty soon.
Okay, we've got a running list of about a dozen things, but.
I already have the gentleman.
Okay, that's great. Ms. Collins?
Do we have Governor Stotan's agenda on for town farm?
We have one tonight regarding the TARP.
Right.
But we can certainly add one at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? Community happenings, the only thing that I want to mention is tomorrow night, the Forbes House is holding Frederick Douglass reading with the Courageous Conversations organization in town, and so that's tomorrow, June 24th, at 7:00 PM at the Forbes House Museum, and volunteers from the community, and at least a couple from the board will be taking part in the reading. Any other community happenings?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wells? Oh, yes.
This weekend is the Milton Music Festival, which, one of our bigger events, we're expecting a very large crowd. It starts Saturday at 5:00 at Hutchinson Field, and runs till fireworks begin at 9:45. We'll be firing right up over the field, we've got a lot of inquiries, and it ends, it's a 30-minute show, it ends at 10:15, and then on Sunday, we open up again at noon time, eight hours of music from noon to 8:00 on Sunday, so. Weather is looking very good, and as Susie was texting, people are texting, calling, asking, so I think it's a great thing for the community, I think we're ready for it, so I think it'll be great.
That's great. It's nice that we'll have that again this year.
Ice cream truck?
Oh, yeah, two, two. That's, we have a great committee, and the committee's really only like six or seven people, but terrific sponsorship, donors, like so many people help. I can't, as Michael said, I can't thank the town departments who really kick in here, so it's, they really, it's great.
The fireworks is certainly a great show.
It is.
All right, with that, we will recess this meeting and open up the Governor Stotan Trustees meeting, call to order the Governor Stotan trustees, and we only have one item on our agenda for this meeting, which relates to an estimate that Mr. Dennehy obtained for as regarding the TARP that covers the main almshouse, which we've talked about at a prior meeting, and we're going to get a quote for that. So why don't I ask Mr. Dennehy to give us an update?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am looking for the quote from Mr. Ritchie. So Bill Ritchie reached out following proper procurement law, and requested price for that. I believe the price was the same exact price as it was two years ago to top the building. D and D Construction, who previously did it, thank you, Susie, estimated the quote at $2,750. This also includes removing the old worn-out tops from the roof, installing new tops and striping as needed to secure the roof. Total cost of labor and material, and disposal fee, $2,750. Pierce and Myers Enterprise doing business as D and D Construction.
Madam Chair, for the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the amount of $2,750 to replace the top covering the cost for the almshouse.
Second. Okay, and for the public spend, and I think we discussed this before, a resident brought this to our attention, because it's becoming a problem for abutters, so this is fairly short dollars for something that's needed. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Just a question-
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
If I may, Madam Chair, and that is what the expected lifespan of the replacement top would be? Probably the same as this one, which was two years. We had very, I mean, we had some weather events, but if you've been up there, it's, what happened was it shredded from the wind, and then the blue topping ended up in, of course, at Brook, in people's backyards. And it's, I mean, the building held well, they framed the windows and stuff like that to secure the building previously from, we thought there might have been some people occupying the building every once in a while, so the building is secure, it's just we want to maintain that topping on the roof, so.
That's very well.
Yeah.
Okay, no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we'll adjourn the Governor Stotan Trustees meeting, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. So we're back at the Select Board meeting, and we now have three executive session items. So I will move that we enter executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, specifically 432 Adams Street, believing that having such discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. That we enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for future negotiations with all non-union personnel regarding employee benefits, believing that having such discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and to discuss strategy with respect to future collective bargaining with, regarding employee benefits. I believe that one is with union personnel, believing that having such discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position, or the bargaining position of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is actually roll call.
Roll call, you're right. Mr. Doyle, thank you very much. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay. Now we are in executive session. Thank you very much.